I want to welcome everyone here this evening and we're going to begin the meeting if you'll rise with the invocation led by County Manager Alan Iwers and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Wayne Neal.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the freedom we have to gather tonight and to discuss the business of this community. And Father, we thank you for the men and women who work every day as public safety officers. In the past few weeks, Father, have been tremendous in terms of the number of responses they've had to go on, especially this past weekend with a terrible tragic auto fatality, as well as a very serious and involved motel fire. And we just thank you for their willingness every day to put their lives in harm's way to protect and serve others. And Father, today is the 75th anniversary of the D-Day invasion. We thank you of those men and women who are of the greatest generation, Father, who gave their lives and fought for our freedom. And that freedom is why we're able to gather here today. We ask your protection around those men and women still today, Father, protecting our nation and our freedom and those values we hold dear. And we pray that you protect them wherever they are in this nation or around the world. And finally, Father, I ask for wisdom for the Board of Commissioners, that you would just give them guidance, Father, and help them to make those decisions which would be pleasing to you and beneficial for our community. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me as we proudly say our pledge of allegiance in this day and remember it's for the 75th anniversary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We're going to go on to the public comment period. We have three speakers signed up tonight. The first speaker is going to be Mr. David Lewis. If you'd come up and restate your name for the record and limit your time to five minutes.
How's it going, guys? All right. My name is David Chase Lewis. Hello, my name is Dr. David Lewis. In addition to teaching computer science, I also own half a dozen short-term rentals on SSI, and I own a pharmaceutical software company that improves patient safety at hospitals located literally all over the entire world. When I first heard that the contract agreement with host compliance, I had some concerns and some basic questions. I sat down with the Commissioner for an awesome lunch at one of our local restaurants here in Glen County. He gave me his typical examples of bad experiences a few residents had with short-term rentals. Because we have a short-term rental-driven economy, I had a few basic questions so that I could understand the short-term rental problem. Number one, what data do we have in the form of code violations, noise complaints, parking ticket violations at short-term rental locations, or any other forms of documentation to quantify the problems we have with short-term rentals? The Commissioner was unable to answer that question. I additionally asked a similar question at a town hall meeting, hoping that any members of the leadership for the county could quantify the problem. Again, this simple question cannot be answered. I have a huge problem with this basic aspect. Glen County is looking at going into a contract with a company based out in California on a premise that cannot be quantified. This is a very basic concept. Recently, in the Brunswick News, one of our county commissioners stated that, quote, "Unfortunately, you don't write ordinances for the 80% who are going to voluntarily be good neighbors. You write them for the 20% who won't." Here, this Commissioner is trying to get you and the readers of the Brunswick News to believe that on a daily basis, we have about 400 short-term rental violations taken place. That's 20% of 2,000 rentals would be about 400. This is not the case. To anyone that is trying to make this argument, simply say, "Show me the data. Show me the noise complaints, the fire code violations, the parking tickets that are issued at illegally parked cars in short-term rental locations." However, if we cannot first quantify what we think is a problem, then we are creating a greater problem when we increase regulation and go into contracts with companies that will not even have a presence here in Glen County. I am not trying to insinuate that there are zero problems. I'm simply saying that we should defer this agreement until we can first quantify our current status. Number two, another question I have is, what market research has the county completed in order to determine the side effects/ financial impact that additional regulation on short-term rentals would have, specifically increased costs due to the contract with host compliance? I've been very shocked to find out that no such investigation has taken place or is planned. This is quite disappointing to me as a resident, a business owner, and a short-term rental owner. The fact is that Glen County, specifically St. Simons Island, is a short-term rental-driven economy. It is our bread and butter for getting outside money to funnel into our local economy. So if we take our short-term rental economy and add additional unnecessary regulation, I hope that the local leadership would be investigating how that is going to impact our local economy. The fact is this, more regulation will increase costs. If we have to have short-term rental permit costs, then that will increase nightly rates to make up the difference. This takes more money out of travel pockets and out of our local economy. Instead of having more money in their pocket to go to Southern Soul or rent bikes, they will have to pay me as a short-term rental owner, and then I get to send that money over to California to pay for the permit. So in a sense, this will take money straight out of our economy and ship it across the country. So I would like to know this: A, how many cleaning folks will be affected? B, how many handymen will be affected? C, how many businesses will be affected? D, how many constituents in your district depend on short-term rentals? I know for me, every single person I employ depends 100% on my short-term rental. I've been able to increase my pay for my cleaning folks to a point to where she could afford a new house and a new car. She thanks me all the time. She lives in Brunswick. I'm in the middle of sharing her information and sharing potential properties with her so that she can teach, and I can teach her, how to own her own short-term rental for herself so that she can live the American dream. Additional regulation will kill that dream for her, and it will make entrance into this industry too difficult for her. Additionally, her current pay from me is at risk if I have to cut costs due to additional cost placed on me for the permits. These are basic questions and concepts that need to first be answered in order to be able to decide: A, does the problem really exist? And B, would a contract with a company out in California be the solution for us here in the Golden Isles? Current laws and building codes would solve the same two short-term rental examples I keep hearing about over and over.
That's fine.
I appreciate it. Guys, if you want to hear more, it's just a little bit more, I can email it to you, but I'm not going to force you to sit through it because I don't want to steal some time from the rest of my guys. All right? So, I have four basic questions. Have we yet quantified the problem? Have you done an analysis on it? Are you okay with the fact that host compliance cannot provide a full list of owners based on that, based on the terms of use in Airbnb and VRBO because no such data is accessible? Are we okay with the fact that host compliance still requires local governments to enforce any complaints? I beta-tested this hotline that I keep hearing about because that's what we do in computer science. We beta-test. We test it, see what it's about. Host compliance and their automated hotline, I called.
Mr. Lewis, that was more than, that was more than four basic questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Wesley Joyner, come up and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Wesley Joyner. I reside at 1164 Peachtree Street on St. Simons. I'm a local wealth advisor and I own a boutique short-term rental business and management program. My family moved from Atlanta to St. Simons when I was five, and over the last 30 years, I've witnessed the island change rapidly. Today, the island looks completely different than the island I remember as a boy. Some of these changes and developments are harder to stomach than others, but I have to remind myself that regardless of my history here, it's not my island. The island has become an overwhelmingly popular tourist destination. Working at Sea Island for almost a decade, I gained an intense passion for hospitality and found myself longing for the busy summers and months when the island seems to swell with guests that flood our hotels, restaurants, bars, and beaches, admittedly annoying sometimes, but for the most part, it's something I look forward to. It's not just St. Simons that's changed. People's preferences for accommodations have also evolved, with a growing segment of travelers seeking a more personalized local experience. This is where our thriving short-term rental market is such a draw to so many guests. My business has coined this type of travel as self-catered hospitality, where guests come to our neighborhoods and experience what it's like to be a local in this amazing place. For the vast majority of these visitors, they realize that these types of accommodations are a privilege, and they treat our neighborhoods with respect. A very small percentage of these visitors can be annoying, and an even smaller percentage rise to the need for serious enforcement. I have a passion for preserving history of the island, and I started a business that specializes in restoring old homes. One of these homes is the Stanton Inn on Ocean Boulevard, which was originally built as a guest stayhouse for my neighborhood. Since converting Stanton back to its original use, we have hosted hundreds of guests without any problems. I've made a point to meet all my neighbors, provide my number in case of emergency, educate my guests on the behavior that's expected while they're there. Are booking rules and guest communications address how many cars they can bring, how many people are allowed to occupy the property, and how much trash they are allotted and where to discard it? This is a simple formula that should be the basis of our county's short-term ordinance. The most important basis of a new ordinance should be bringing all the players to the table, and it's some, so we can craft something that we, the community can all live with. Starting with the host compliance program is a mistake for a number of reasons. It puts a third-party company in the driver's seat of a process that should be driven by locals. This ordinance is not hard to write. Over the last month, I've met with disgruntled neighbors, property managers, independent hosts. All parties seem to agree in part to some simple ordinance, including registration requirements orchestrated by existing county processes, create an easy solution like allowing owners to check a box on their annual property tax bill and designate this as a short-term rental, make registration affordable, adopt standards that hosts all can agree and abide on and educate their guests for, beef up local enforcement to address problems that arise. Even if host compliance is our selected choice, enforcement will still fall on our code enforcement, law enforcement, county administration, and courts. Enter voluntary consent agreements with booking agents for them to collect and remit taxes automatically. Airbnb and VRBO account for almost 100% of the short-term rentals in Glen County. This method guarantees virtually all taxes are collected. Spend the money on new county FTEs and technology. Invest this money locally. Engage local interests before signing any agreement with host compliance. Please know that we are in a sales funnel to buy an unnecessary product even if the $5,000 consulting fee is our first ask. Host compliance is not even going to write this ordinance. Their contract states that they will use a third party. Further, all host compliance ordinances are public record and are an easy Google search away. Please consider the serious economic repercussions that any regulation will have on such a large part of our economy. Are you aware that Hilton had recently passed short-term rental ordinances that increased home vacancies to 16%? Less home demand, less buying, lower property values. Are you aware that our local occupancy rates for the summer are way down from previous years? The market average for June is 40% this year. King &amp; Prince has vacancies on almost every day this summer. I've never seen such softness in our real estate market. Are you aware that the margins for short-term rental owners are actually quite thin? A self-managed property has an expense of about 50% with taxes and costs, and managed properties' margins are even thinner. For all the residents who are complaining that short-term rentals are ruining their neighborhoods, I'll champion your concerns and be part of a democratic process to create better regulations. We all have to remember, it's not my island, it's our island. Work with your neighbors and your fellow citizens to come up with a workable solution. I respectfully ask that the Commission defer any vote on host compliance until all parties are brought to the table to discuss, and we've discussed the economic implications that any regulation would have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Next up is Patrick Anderson. Please come up and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Patrick Anderson. I've lived at 314 Wimberly Road in St. Simons Island for 25 years. I wasn't born here, but I got here as quick as I could. I'm a real estate broker with 20 years' experience in the business. You can reach me at 912-223-3263 if anybody's looking for anything. I am also the neighborhood manager for Coast cottages at St. Simons, where we have 35 short-term rental properties. I own one of those myself, and I have six years' experience managing short-term rentals for 25 other property owners. On Tuesday of this week, I received an email from my local Board of Realtors announcing a meeting for next week with two of our county commissioners. The purpose is to get an update on the agreement with host compliance and to have an open discussion about any concerns we may have. The meeting is scheduled for June 14th, one week from tomorrow. Also, this past Tuesday, I was shocked to learn that the service agreement with host compliance would be voted on at tonight's meeting. So one week from tomorrow is a little late to have any meaningful input about hiring host compliance. By then, the county may be committed to a $97,000 contract. This item has been placed on the consent agenda, also known as the done-deal agenda, where no discussion takes place, no public hearing, and no opportunity to consider all sides of the issue. I would be very grateful if the Commission would pull this item from the consent agenda and discuss it during the public hearing. We're anxious to hear what each Commissioner has to say on the matter. This proposal from host compliance has not been properly vetted by the stakeholders. It's clearly not ready for approval. I, along with the short-term rental owners that I represent, request that you defer your decision on hiring host compliance. I believe there are others here tonight who agree that we need to slow this process down and invite more input. Before the county invites a company from San Francisco to lead us into a slew of burdensome regulation, all of our stakeholders should be heard. The real estate community, professional property managers, and short-term rental owners all deserve a seat at the table, not just the residents who complain about the notorious party houses. There is no debate that we need to address some problems related to short-term rentals. Every Glen County resident deserves the peaceful enjoyment of their properties and their neighborhoods, but offloading the responsibilities of local government to a company almost 3,000 miles away is not a good answer. As an example, the county's tax collection issues can be eliminated very easily by requiring Airbnb, VRBO, and every other online booking platform to collect state and local lodging tax when they take the reservation. Those platforms would then pay the taxes directly to the state and the county. This relieves the property owner from any temptation to cheat on their taxes. It's already done this way in Florida and many other states and counties. This approach collects virtually 100% of the taxes due and eliminates the need for over $60,000 of host compliance's $97,000 price tag. Has anyone in the county considered this? I think it's a no-brainer. There are many other good ideas, some of them right here in this room, about how we can address the very important issues surrounding short-term rentals. We can do this together. There's no reason to fast-track it. Please defer this item to a future meeting so that all of our ideas can be heard and carefully considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That completes the public comment period. We'll now move on to commission presentations and announcements. I'm going to ask Queen Quat if you want to come up to the podium. Please, ma'am.
Good evening, Commission. Good to see you.
Good evening. Good to have you here. I'm going to read the proclamation, then if you want to speak. Okay?
Sure.
So, proclamation, recognizing Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. Whereas Glen County was founded in 1777 as one of the original eight counties of Georgia, at its founding, Africans were brought in to build this county. These Africans came to reside in the Golden Isles to include St. Simons, Sea Island, and Jekyll, as well as in the county seat of Brunswick. And whereas, this population of enslaved Africans, who were now called Gullah Geechee, and their descendants continue to occupy this region, and whereas, these Gullah Geeches have made history by being either aboard the last documented enslavement vessel to North America, which arrived at Jekyll Island called the Wanderer on November 28, 1858, or by being part of the Igbo's of Ibo Landing that resisted enslavement. And whereas, Queen Quat, chiefess of the Gullah Geechee Nation, has done ceremonies to honor the souls of Ibo Landing on St. Simons and of the Wanderer on Jekyll Island. And whereas, Queen Quat has worked with Gullah Geeches in Glen County to establish what is now the St. Simons African-American Heritage Coalition and the Gullah Geechee Board of Brunswick in order to ensure that the history of Gullah Geeches continues to be told. And whereas, Queen Quat, who became the first Gullah Geechee in the world to speak before the United Nations on behalf of Gullah Geeches and established the Gullah Geechee Sea Island Coalition to continue to work to sustain Gullah Geechee culture and land ownership. And whereas, Glen County supports the Gullah Geechee Sustainability Plan to protect our coast and keep the Gullah Geechee cultural heritage alive. And whereas, a series of activities will take place throughout Glen County, Georgia, to honor the history and legacy of the Gullah Geechee Nation during Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week, and we join in celebrating the theme, "Hilling the Land and Holding Pun the Culture." Hope I got that right.
You must have got them. You learn a little bit every time I come for you.
Well, I'm going to finish up here.
Okay.
I'm almost there.
Go on.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that July 27 through August 4, 2019, as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Glen County, Georgia. And witness whereof, I set my hand on this sixth day of June 2019, Michael Browning, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
And I'll bring this down to you.
Please. Thank you, thank you, sir. I'm so glad to be back here in Brunswick. We got Queen Quat Day in August and things like that. I'm so glad for you to crack your teeth. So, we're going to get you a Gullah. Gullah, that's the only one you ain't get them right. You say Gula. Gullah. There, it's Gullah. So, that's the only one. But you hold them down when you've been to crack your teeth, ain't Gullah and things like that. So, we know somebody living in Indiana and things like that. So, when I first started coming up here, I know when I would speak, y'all would kind of lean forward, like that was going to help translate. So, it's kind of, it's kind of fun now to actually have a chairman who hit the nail on the head tonight. So, that was really wonderful, and I'm very happy to be here once again and to have you all be the first county in Georgia this year to proclaim Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. So, go on, Glen County. So, you're right out there leading once again, and we truly appreciate you continuing to honor the legacy of our history in this county because it's so critical. I'm hearing all the people here that have the Airbnbs and the short-term rentals and, of course, know all the other people around here in the hospitality industry. And I know one of the things people come looking for is they come here to the Golden Isles saying, "Where are the Gullah Geechee people?" We done yadda them and things like that. We did and things like that. We figure they deep on the island. So, we have to often let them know, there are even more Gullah Geeches that are not on the islands of Glen County, that are actually on the mainland area than they are on the islands. But we want people, whether they're on the mainland or on the islands, whether it's short-term or long-term, to know who we are. So, yadda who we be down in Ishaa County. So, we thank you for every year continuing to celebrate our legacy with us and to help us hold, punish, and culture and things like that while we healing land together. So, thank you, thank you.
(Applause) limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual. allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item two. Consider the issuance of a 2019 alcoholic beverage license to Michael Andrew Childry for SidePockets LLC, 360 Mall Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia 31525. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premises of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. Michael Andrew Childry, licensee. Chief?
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Michael. Mr. Commissioners, the applicant meets all the requirements as required by the ordinance, and he is present for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing. All those in favor, if you would come up, if you want to speak in favor of the applicant, come up to the podium and state your name.
Favor of the application.
Oh, the application. Or if your favorite applicant's application, whatever. Seeing none, hearing none, all those opposed, the application. Likewise, no one wants to come up to the podium? Okay. Commissioners, y'all have any questions?
Make a motion to approve the alcohol license for Mr. Childry.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, well, first off, any more discussion? Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing, budget. Item three, receive citizens' comments regarding their proposed Glen County FY19-20 budget.
Good evening, Commissioners and citizens. I have shortened my presentation, so it's not as long as the last two, but I wanted to just do a brief overview of the budget that is proposed for fiscal year 20. The revenues, 75% of our revenues come from taxes. This includes sales taxes, property taxes, automobile taxes, timber taxes, all kinds of taxes. Also includes the hotel motel taxes. 12.3% of our revenues come from charges for services, so these are things like building permits and gun permits and things like that that people are getting. Intergovernmental revenue is 4% of our revenue, and that is our grant revenue. And our other sources is just other miscellaneous sources that don't fall into one of those buckets. That's 2%. At the bottom there, you can see our fiscal year 20 projections and the fiscal year 19 projections, or per actuals that we collected. One of the changes you're going to see in the budget this year is with our service delivery and millage rates. In the service delivery discussions with the city of Brunswick, the police fund was discussed, and we've taken the police fund out of the general fund and created a new police fund that will be taxed for districts 2 through 5. Also, EMS has come out of the general fund, and tax districts 1 through 5 will be charged for EMS. The millage rates for tax districts 2 through 5 have had no change in their overall millage rate. What they paid previously has just been split up between the districts. Tax District 1, which is the city of Brunswick, has actually had a tax decrease of 1.84 mils, and Tax District 6, Jekyll Island, has had a tax decrease of 1.828 mils. I put this in here, I know it's difficult to see, but really so people can reference it on the website if they're interested. There's a comparison of the FY19 actual millage rates to the FY20 proposed millage rates. And you can see here, District 1 was 7.873 in FY19 and proposed at 6.033. The other districts here, 2 through 5, are the same as they were last year. And then the last district has had a decrease, the Jekyll Island district. So, the overall tax millage rates have not increased in this proposed budget. Our major expense categories are personnel, county operations, and capital. And you can see the comparison here between FY20 and FY19. We're pretty close on our percentages. The only thing that's changed is our capital amount has gone down due to some decreased revenues. So, over here, we have our personnel cost, proposed at 63.1 million for fiscal year 20, which includes a 2.5% cost of living raise for employees. Operations at 65.5 million. This appears to be a $6 million reduction from last year, but this is due to the elimination of inter-fund transfers, which I explained all about in our previous meetings. And then capital, we have 3.27 million budgeted for capital expenditures. Overall, our official budget for countywide for FY19, our approved budget in fiscal year 19 was $142 million, and our countywide proposed FY20 budget for the official budget is $132 million. So, this looks like a $10 million decrease. What it actually, this is what I call true dollars or actual dollars, which is the elimination of the transfers. So, the easiest way for me to explain this is if you get a $500 deposit in your checking account, and you take it out and you put it into your savings account, you're going to see two $500 deposits on your statements, but it's only really $500. You just moved it from one account to the other. So, that's what the elimination of these inter-fund transfers are. So, the budget here is our true, actual budget. So, for FY19, our true budget of expenditures was 1.87 million, and our proposed countywide budget for FY20 with the elimination of the transfers is 107 million. So, the bottom line is we have reduced our budget by $1.7 million in true spending between FY19 and FY20. Any questions?
Thank you, Tamara. Commissioners, y'all have any questions before we open it up to public comment?
Tamara, could you talk about the capital, why the capital fund went down?
Yes, so, we, the capital fund went down, the capital expenditures went down because we have less capital projects. The capital expenditures that are included in our budget does not include SLOST. So, these are other capital expenditures that are funded by the capital fund, as well as the other special revenue funds. So, we had some large projects last year, one of which was our munis implementation system. So, that was a $1.6 million project that caused a big decrease. And there were other several, there were several other larger projects that were on there last year that were, that are not on there this year, so that's why we have less capital expenditures this year.
Commissioners? Okay. Tamara, thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to open this up for, to receive citizen comments regarding their proposed budget, so anyone want to come up to the podium?
Just speak for her again.
You know what? Just come up and state your name. I think you're sometimes for something, except you're against something.
Except when I'm against. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith, and I have some grave reservations about this budget, and I hope you will have some public hearings on the island and the mainland and encourage the public to come to speak. My wife and I have enjoyed a home on St. Simons Island since 1993 and a second home on the mainland since 2015. Our second home is where we will go if a storm surge takes away our first home. We are happy to pay taxes on our six properties in Glen County and would be willing to pay more if you would stop wasting time and money on projects like some of the ones proposed in the budget. And I'm talking about this document, which is almost 50 pages long, and I hope some of you have read it. And on wasting time and money on the kind of new SLOST you're about to set in motion with the last item on your agenda tonight. What's wrong with this document? There's no way I can even begin to tell you in five minutes, so let me do what I can. Turn to page five, the overview, and look at the shuffling around of funds. It's a kind of fast work done by a card sharp. The verbiage is wonderful. Quote, "In fiscal year 20, several changes are being made to the fund structure of Glen County, which makes comparison of the budgets between fiscal years 19 and 20 challenging." Unquote. Wonderful. Keep challenging us. A look at the Safe Community Strategic Plan on page 10. There's a bold claim. Quote, "Public safety has remained the top priority for the Board of Commissioners." There's not a dollar there or anywhere in the budget that I can find that has anything to do with public safety in the event the tourist causeway is closed before St. Simons Island can be evacuated because of a major hurricane or storm surge. Nothing for identifying sturdy buildings where citizens can take shelter. There's nothing about funds to identify or provide shelter for citizens who cannot evacuate from other low-lying parts of the county mainland. I've been asking you to start providing those funds and thinking about those things for four years. I will continue asking as long as I have breath. On page 14, we find the Exceptional Customer Service Strategic Plan. The list of goodies begins with $14,000 to replace a camera drone, $20,000 to update the record storage system, and an unspecified amount to replace a half-ton truck containing, which also has a life bar on it. Please, gentlemen, stop treating us like customers and thinking of us as customers. We are not your customers. We are the people responsible for electing you to sit up there and serve us. We are not your customers. Let's jump ahead to page 16, The Great Place to Live Strategic Plan. All we have to do is look at the first item on the list. Quote, "One replacement 16-foot tandem axle landscape trailer, $4,800." That's just what any great place to live needs, a 16-foot trailer. On page 17, The Valued Employees Strategic Plan informs us that, quote, "Employees are Glen County's number-one asset." And what's the first thing on that wish list? Here it is. Quote, "Replace fire station roof," unquote, for $20,000. Do you firefighters in the audience feel valued with a new roof? I guess so. And finally, turn back to page 15, The Planned and Managed Growth Strategic Plan. We're told there's an ordinance review process which will, and I quote, "Help staff achieve the vision set forth in the comprehensive plan and ensure that the county is planning for the future." There's nothing about helping or even allowing the two planning commissions to have a fighting chance to plan for the future. The exquisite verbiage on that page includes these fine words. "The diversity of needs and the significant long-range opportunities mandate an immediate and aggressive effort to engage the whole of Glen County in planning and developing a future state that is both sustainable and economically viable." Think of that. An immediate and aggressive effort to engage the whole of Glen County in planning. Is that what happened at the zoning update kickoff meeting in the library last month? When the team of consultants refused to hear questions or comments from the public? When a county police officer rushed forward immediately and aggressively because I spoke up and asked, "Why don't you hear from the public?" Yes, we need an immediate and aggressive effort to engage the whole of Glen County in planning. That word "whole" is spelled W-H-O-L-E, not H-O-L-E.
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Smith. That was your whole five minutes and something." Plus.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement during this time?
Sure.
And Mr. Smith does bring up a good point about the issue with the causeway and having plans in place, I think especially for expansion and repair to it. But that's going to take, not only the county commission, that's going to take people contacting their state representatives, state senator, and helping us get that discussion rolling. So, it's not like we're not hearing what you're saying. We have reached out to them, so I think if others reach out to it, it may be helpful. That's not going to solve it, but it may be one of the first steps that we need to take to try to get something done.
Put a draw on the ledger.
No, thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to come up and address the public with their comments on the budget? Mr. Kelgor?
Jeff Kelgor. And so, I first would like to follow Commissioner O'Quinn's suggestion and say that I'm standing here to put a bug in the air. I join you and hopefully everyone up there, that the local delegation and this commission should be dealing with the safety issues that may be necessary for this community in the future, particularly if we have anything on the order of like Hurricane Michael last year that comes up with like two days' notice, and 25 or 30 years from now, we have another 12,000 or 13,000 people on St. Simons Island. But with regard to the budget, I'd like to commend Tamara for some of the corrections she's made. I also appreciate the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Booker and Commissioner O'Quinn and the Finance Office. Some of the things that I have complained about historically regarding carryforwards have been corrected, and she's done an excellent job with that. I am very pleased to see that. I long have wondered why the auditors don't deal with the inter-fund transfers, and she is obviously now taking care of that. Should have been done a long time ago. The information that you get is clearly misleading. It's grossed up to have the transfers, and now that they're netted out, you're getting much better information. I'm struck by the decrease in the forecast revenue from the actual collections this year, apparently of $83 million, and a forecast for next year of $80, particularly since there's a across-the-board increase in the assessments that have gone out, and I'm sure you're all aware of it and you've heard of it. So, it would occur to me that there's going to be a bit of a windfall in actual collections in the FY 2020, and I'm guessing that's being done intentionally to provide a cushion or a fund to deal with the property tax, the Scarlett Williams issue that you've inherited. I don't know, but if that is the case, it occurs to me that you should be upfront and tell the people the truth and let them know why they're paying more taxes and just be straight up with people, as I hope you will be. And I'm glad to see that Mr. Smith is well. He's been sick for so long, and once again, he returned to his true form. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and address the commission? Okay, that ends the public hearing on the budget. Next, item four, public hearing, land use. CUP 3992, Norah's at the Pier Restaurant. Consider a conditional use permit to operate a full-service restaurant at 115 Mallory Street, St. Simons Island. The 0.12 acre, total of 5,227.2 square feet, property is zoned...
The 0.12 acre, total of 5,227.2 square feet, property is zoned village-mixed-use, VMU, and island preservation design overlay district, IP, and restaurants for conditional uses within the VMU zoning district. Parcel ID 04-04621, Samantha Vince, Norris LLC, applicant and agent for Blue Water Bistro, owner. Pam?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a conditional use for Norris at the Pier Restaurant. Chairman Browning has told you all the information about where it's located. The existing land use is commercial. It was a former restaurant, but any new restaurant needs to have a conditional use permit. This is the zoning of the property and where it's located. It is in village-mixed-use. The proposed use is a full-service, family-run restaurant. It was formerly the Blue Water Bistro, and it is seating for 200 people, approximately 40 staff, and parking in the surrounding areas. As you're aware, in the village, there is mostly only public parking. They will be open daily for lunch and dinner. This is the view of the building from Mallory, the side elevations. I know this is small, but in your packet, you actually have their proposed menu. That's not required, but they wanted to show you what they do plan to serve. On May 21st, the Islands Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item. The questions and concerns that came up during the hearing was whether or not there would be outdoor music, and the owner said the music will only be indoors and on the weekends, and about parking on Floyd Street. And the applicant said they would shuttle employees to parking lots further away from the village and would be sure to tell their employees not to park there. The IPC unanimously recommended approval of CUP 3992. Here are your possible actions and the recommended motion to approve this application. I'm available for question, and applicants are here tonight if you have any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Pam? Okay, Pam, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
We need to.
Oh, a public hearing?
Yeah.
Apologize, apologize.
If we hold up with that.
Something to say, huh?
It is a public hearing, and all those in favor of the application, speak up, come up to the podium and state your name and...
I'm Julian Smith. I still live on the island. I'm very enthusiastic about this restaurant. I read their prospectus, and it's in your packet. It sounds like it's going to be a well-run place. I'm happy to see this building being used again. It's been empty for too long. I hope the applicants, the new owners, are able to do everything they want to do, and if they are successful, that's going to require us to start thinking very realistically about parking in the village area. Oddly enough, this is an opportunity to talk to the county, to the city commission about plans, those long-delayed plans for a hotel in downtown Brunswick. I really think we need a hotel with a shuttle service so people can be in downtown Brunswick, they can come onto the island, to the beach in shuttle buses, to the village, and so on. Eventually, we're going to have to do something about parking in the village area if we continue to be as successful as we are, being a tourist attraction. So good luck to this restaurant, and I hope everything works out. But let's start thinking about how we can provide either more parking or, I'm not talking about a parking deck that terribly expensive, but we really need to do something because it's getting hard for ordinary citizens to go to the library, to go down to the pier in the middle of the day, in the middle of the tourist season, which is pretty damn long. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the conditional use permit? Seeing none, hearing none, anyone wish to oppose? Seeing none, hearing none, Commissioners?
I would like to make a motion to approve this conditional use permit as presented.
Second. Second. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those, are there any more questions? Okay, call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve all items on the consent agenda, general business and consent agenda finance, with the exception of those items that a commissioner may wish to pull for discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like for us to pull items number nine and number ten from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, pull items nine and ten. Okay, did we have a second on the original motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Item nine, Commissioner Murphy, if you want to read it.
Sure enough. Item nine is to approve a leasehold agreement buy-in between Glen County and Saint Simon's Boating and Fishing Club Incorporated for the Saint Simon's Island Marina. As some may know, we have been struggling with an update of the lease agreement between the county and the Saint Simon's Boating and Fishing Club for about two and a half years. It first came to our attention that there was an outdated lease when damage occurred at the club during Hurricane Matthew. Since that time, we've worked diligently to try to come to an agreement with the club. There's been an extensive analysis of damages to the club. There's been concern about insurance on the docks. We had a work session, I believe it was ten days ago, to address all these issues, and I think we had a good back-and-forth with a representative from the boat club. And the primary reason I asked to pull this this evening was to see if any of the fellow Commissioners had any questions about what we agreed to, but most importantly, to allow Attorney Mumford to clarify the issue as to the control of the escrow fund, which was agreed to in lieu of insurance, which the previous lease obligated the club to for the docks and such in the water, but which have been found to be an outrageously expensive number that we did agree to an establishment of an escrow fund. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. So at your last work session, the board, we went through the high points of this lease, and the board gave positive feedback on those. There were four things the club was asking for some provisions to, three of which this board, just through the conversation, seemed to be agreeable to. So this current lease on your agenda includes those updates. In the time since your work session, the club, their attorney has come back to us, sort of to me, and said, "Hey, would the board be willing to let this escrow fund, this is the act of God fund, if there's an act of God that destroys the docks, would they let the club be the custodian of that as opposed to the county?" The lease we discussed at your last work session had the county as the custodian of that fund, but they're requesting that they be the custodian, and this is really more of a policy question than it is legal question, but you can do it. So what you have on the projected screen right now is a alternate paragraph 31-J to what's in your published agenda. So if you are okay with that request, what we would do here is that it would require a dual signature, both the club and the county, to either withdraw funds or to close that account. So there is a safeguard in that, but the account would be in their name as opposed to the county's name. The, you know, it'd be twenty thousand dollars per year, two-hundred-thousand-dollar cap to be used for an event caused by an act of God. This is in lieu of their insurance requirements due to the cost of getting insurance on that kind of named storm type of event, et cetera. So if there are any questions about that, that's the only thing that would deviate from what I was given some directive and guidance on at your last work session. So the recommended motion, if you wanted to accommodate that request, would be to adopt the lease as presented, subject to the updated or with the updated paragraph 31-J.
So the twenty thousand dollars, you're still going to do that, but, you know, I asked the question back at the workshop. Suppose we have a loss next year, it ain't going to be the twenty thousand dollars to fix it. And you still going to have the county's insurance going to back that up, or?
The county's insurance will back that up once the deductible is met. So the county would still be responsible for the deductible, which I believe is 250,000 for named storm. So if it happens next year, we only have 20,000, then the county would make up the difference. If it happens after the full 200,000 is there, then the county would make up the difference at that point. So there is, you know, in the first, you know, few years until that 200,000 is met, you know, the remainder would be on the county.
That's what I'm saying. What you'd say, what you're doing is basically building a, an account here to cover the deductible.
That is correct. That's correct. When we were talking with them through getting insurance, what we were being told after they shopped around, that their insurance policy would be around 20,000 to 25,000 dollars a year. So instead of giving that money, just giving it away, or, you know, having insurance for it, a proposal was made to have that money in a fund, a funds that would just sit there in cash until needed.
Okay, so you would have to go into this, what, four to five years before they would be in a break-even situation? I mean, if they only going to put 20 grand a year in it, five years, that's just 100,000. You still got, you say, 250,000 deductible to take care of?
That's right.
So we still 150,000 short, and we're going to have to come out before our policy would kick in.
If it happened in the first few years, correct. After 10 years, they'll be fully funded, so there is some additional county responsibility in those first few years. This will be a five-year lease with two five-year option renewals, so it's 15 years. So after 10, they'll be fully funded, and that, there was some discussion about, you know, being able to up that, raise that amount to 25,000, maybe higher, after a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings, and this is what they felt like they could afford in terms of, you know, under their current administration, without having to raise rates too much to their users.
Well, I mean, the whole thing is, you know, we're not, our batting average has not been well with the hurricanes over the last 36 months. We've, as you well know, had two within 11 months, and according to what I've been watching on the Weather Channel, it doesn't look like things are going to get any better. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think, taking another look at how that money is being spent right there, you know, as a 42-year insurance agent, I can't help but tell you, there's nothing better than an insurance policy when you have catastrophic loss like that. I mean, if we want to lay the taxpayers' dollars on the line to do that, then, I mean, basically, that's what we're doing. Me, I buy a policy. I just think, I mean, this is, this is not insuring anything today. We're counting on playing the odds. When you say you're going to have to let it build up, and we're basically doing nothing more than having a cash account that's going to, that I guess that we'd be in their name, but they were still, I mean, all that's going to do is make up a deductible.
Correct. If that event was over, you know, or over the 250,000, anything under that would be paid for out of this account directly. So if there were only 50,000, now 100, it would be paid out of that account. So a lot of that is based on an event that is over 250. If it's under 250, then that account would still be used to cover that. So there is, there is some risk allocation here. There absolutely is. This is a, what I call, business decision, a policy question of this board. This is, this is the culmination of a lot of conversations that we've had in meetings, but it's ultimately up to you. Both are legal, obviously. You can, you can require a policy that is, and, you know, these are, and this is just for the docks. They will have to carry liability and casualty policies on everything else. They'll also have to still carry casualty policy on the docks for any negligence that happens. So if they create a fire that burns down the docks, they still have to carry that policy. So this is, this is only for a named, well, not only for named storm, but an act of God, named storms that trigger our act of God policy with ACG. But I do understand what you're saying, and I'll defer to y'all on what you want out of this, on that provision, but there is a bit of a risk allocation between the two parties, the county and the club, on this.
You know, I think Glen County is in exponentially better shape with this lease than anything they've ever had before. And I think you've got to look at the whole picture of what we're doing here. We've got, there's a 400,000 bill over there in repairs that this boating club has committed, made the financial commitment to amortize over five years. That's about 80,000 dollars a year, I think, that they're, of their money, not Glen County tax money, but their money that they're putting in the facility. This other 20,000 that they're putting in an escrow account, again, is, basically is used to cover the county's deductible where there are catastrophic event. So, you know, from where we've been to where we are, Glen County government is in, as I said, exponentially better shape. We're going to repair those docks, whether the county repairs them, whether we own the property and manage it, or whether the boating club does. And the boating club has made a commitment to do it. And so, you know, they're on the hook. But the big winner in all of this, and I think in the long run, it'll be the boating club, because this is going to provide some structure, and, but the big winner in this, I think, is the general public. Because the boating club, in order to be able to generate the revenues, to amortize this 400,000 in repairs that they have committed to do, as well as put another 20,000 a year in escrow for this contingency, you're going to have to generate some revenue from the general public. Or either you're going to have to raise, they're going to have to raise their internal dues to a point where it's going to hurt. So I think that they're going to need the public revenue, and that thing is going to open up to the public, and I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody. And, you know, we've gone from this thing with basically no funds coming out for repairs other than the just Band-Aid-type repairs to something that's structured and is going to give some stability to this thing. And I'll tell you, 95% of the credit for all this goes to Commissioner Murphy. I mean, me included, at our head in the sand, and this thing would just moved along, and then we have a hurricane. Commissioner Murphy dug in and has done the heavy carrying on this thing, has taken some heat, and, but I think we've got a great document, a great lease, that's going to carry us all a long way down the road, and particularly, it's going to benefit the general public. So I would encourage us to move on and get this thing put to bed.
Yeah, Commissioner Brunson, thank you for those kind words. It obviously was not done in isolation, but it, I need to also emphasize, this is a public facility. When this first came to my attention, I was under the impression that this is a private boating club. It is not. This is for the benefit of all residents of Glen County. When boats are brought down there and the trailers lined up, they're not prioritized by members and non-members. It's first come, first served. There is a slightly increased launch fee for non-members, but that's part of the situation. But in terms of the insurance policy, let me ask you this, Aaron. If we had damage to any other public facility in Glen County, and we had to reach into our ACGG policy, would there not be a deductible for that?
There would be.
So, I mean, the county would pay the first 250,000 for most any, is it 250,000 on, or is it lesser elsewhere? It doesn't matter.
It's less.
We have some deductible to pay. So to Commissioner Coleman's point, yeah, we are assuming some risk for the first eight to 10 years of this escrow fund, but that's the world in which we live, and apparently, after multiple discussions with members of the boating club, to ensure the docks out in the water is just prohibitive. So can I make a motion now? I forgot my, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Yeah, I'd like to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And as you all know at the work session, I expressed some concern about the membership and the structure of that because... and the structure of that, because with Commissioner Murphy talking about it being open to the public, that was, and that is my concern. Will there be events that are just exclusive for members? And if so, we need to make sure that that's, the public is aware of that, because I think that was some of the concern in the past, that there were events that, where only the membership was allowed to participate in, in the public. What I was saying was that, in the past, can you hear me now? I've got calls about special events that were only put together for membership, and the public was not invited or allowed to participate. So if that's gonna be the case now, I think we should be transparent with the public that that may happen, based on this new agreement.
My understanding, Commissioner Booker, is they do have an annual cookout, but to Commissioner Brunson's point, you know, the more members they get, the better their revenue stream is. And they are gonna be posting information on the county parks and recreation website, and I might just make a general suggestion to the board, and I don't know if any of the members of the board are here, but that they do invite the public to that annual cookout, have to pay a fee, of course, but see if they can solicit new membership that way, 'cause the more members they get, the better their financial goals will be. But that's a good point. Thank you for making it.
Did you make a motion?
No, I was a hair trigger again, I apologize. I do, would like to make a motion, though, to approve the leasehold agreement, buy-in between Glen County and the St. Simons Boating and Fishing Club for the St. Simons Island Marina.
Second.
And Commissioners, is that with the new paragraph substituted?
With the new paragraph is outlined by Attorney Mumford. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's six-four. Those oppose? One oppose. Thank you. Commissioner Murphy, you wanna read item ten and discuss item ten?
Sure enough. Item ten is to approve a services agreement with Host Compliance LLC regarding short-term rentals. So I've asked permission from Commissioner Browning to take maybe more than a few minutes for background purposes on this issue. All of us Commissioners have gotten twenty, twenty-five emails in the last two or three days. They mostly expressed outrage and indignation, which is a current coin of the realm. And I think that there's a bit of misinformation, including what Mr. Anderson just said about us being on the fast-track end of things. In fact, I've never seen anything fast-tracked in Glen County up to the present time. So let me just read a couple comments from one of the emails. One of the emails purports to say that a guest recently canceled his vacation rental at his place in St. Simons because he had read of new regulations that might have him without a place to stay. I would have to think that was somewhere on Facebook, and if we're in the situation of thinking Facebook is a source of reliable information, I think we gotta think again. But he goes on to say, "The county's intent has not been clearly conveyed, and its input has not been well-understood." And I would have to say, true. It reminds me of the old expression, "I can explain it to you, but I can't understand it for you." So let me, let me give a little background. It's gonna take a few minutes, but please keep an understanding, and I think, to a certain extent, my friend, Dr. Lewis, took me literally rather than figuratively about the eighty-twenty rule. Eighty-twenty rule is something I used throughout my medical career to discuss different types of human behavior, but it's not literal. So that four-hundred is obviously not, you know, a figure that I would necessarily hang my hat on. So for me, this all started at an early campaign event about three years ago, when I was in a neighborhood over in the Village area. Several people that lived in the meeting area around a big rental property, it was four or five bedrooms, but they were having upwards of sixteen people staying in that property. A typical example of too many people, too many cars, too much noise, and trash not properly handled. And I was told by the immediately surrounding neighbors that they were told little could be done, 'cause we had no ordinances to allow code enforcement or the police to intervene other than for noise situations, obviously, but that's not the sole complaint we're dealing with here. Also, there's, there was no way in our ordinance, in certain situations, to identify the owner of the property such that they could be notified that there was a property, property issue with the property they owned. So at the same time, the Burton case, the Villa de Suenos case, which is the, probably the most notorious short-term rental issue in the county, that went all the way up to the Supreme Court, but again, there was challenges for the East Beach neighborhood because we didn't have ordinances that would allow the police and the Commissioners necessarily to intervene, so the surrounding neighbors sued the family, and ultimately, it bubbled up to the Supreme Court where a decision was made in favor of the plaintiffs. But it's interesting, the court stated that our ordinances that we had here in Glen County, the intent is to restrict the use of properties in R6 zoning districts primarily to residential use by single families. And based upon that, one of the complainants in the Village area case went on and obtained legal counsel from Savannah and sued the county because it was felt that the Supreme Court was stating that we could have no commercial activities in R6 neighborhoods, which obviously short-term rentals are. They are, in fact, commercial activities. So nearly two years, and that case was dismissed by Judge Kelly in the Superior Court, and that's gone away. But, but I still felt an effort needed to be made to create regulations, ordinances to deal with this issue more effectively going forward. But remember, unlike many other municipalities and counties, no effort was made to enact an outright ban, nor was that ever intended. So what is the motivation of this two-and-a-half-year effort that I would, most would agree is not fast-tracking anything? The first motivation are primarily safety issues. It starts with occupancy numbers, based on the number of bedrooms, the presence of routine safety equipment like smoke alarms and fire extinguishers in houses that are not owner-occupied but rented out to the public. And again, multiple accessible and functioning sites for emergency egress in the face of a crisis like a fire. My big fear is, I don't want us in Glen County to wake up some Saturday morning and hear of a situation where an overcrowded house with impaired college students broke out in a house fire due to something like a candle tipping over, and multiple deaths occurred because we didn't have some of these simple safety measures. Second issue, quality of life issues for the neighbors. There's been explosive growth for these short-term rentals. It's estimated that upwards of eighty percent increase in these short-term rentals in the nation over the last ten years. It's a situation where in residential neighborhoods, established families now feel as if they're living next to a motel. Trash is piled up, cans are overflowing, and sometimes, if the renters don't know or don't care about what happens to the trash, but still in all, it becomes a quality of life issue for their surrounding neighbors. Additionally, multiple cars lined up outside, not necessarily illegally parked, but if you get ten cars in a Glen Haven area, and they're parked down the street in front of some elderly couple's house that used to be able to get out of the car and walk to their front door, and now they've gotta walk three or four houses down to get into their own house, it becomes a quality of life issue. Noise issues don't even need to be mentioned, 'cause they're basic to all this. And at the last, the last issue is to create a level playing field for all hospitality establishments. I was first approached by hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and other short-term rentals to try to create this level playing field, because those that are paying the tax are at a disadvantage from those that don't pay the tax. So as I stated earlier in the conversation, this began two years ago, and I've attempted to be open, transparent, and there was no rush to get this fast-tracked through anything. And again, I would reiterate, I've not seen much fast-tracked in the county. Early on, though, when it was first mentioned two years ago in the newspaper, one Airbnb owner contacted me with a "Shame on you and good luck finding us." Another wrote in the paper, "Murphy plans on stifling the free market in favor of government regulations that will probably inhibit local prosperity." I didn't know I had that power. "Watch out, gun owners," he goes on to say, "you may be next." I mean, seriously, this is just to try to get people to do the right thing. And some are sitting out there saying, and again, the eighty-twenty rule, don't divide this and multiply this out, please, Dr. Lewis, but we already know that many do this already, and I'm sure that most do. But ordinances are not written for those that do the right thing when no one is watching. So what has been done in the recent past two years to achieve an open and completely transparent discussion? I've had a nice luncheon conversation with the manager of one of the largest rental properties groups on St. Simons Island. I had a pleasant lunch conversation with Dr. Lewis. Multiple articles have been written in the Brunswick News and Islander responding to these issues, and in fact, in June of last year, it was stated by Murphy, myself, that any owners that want to participate and give their opinion on how it could be done, certainly, we wanna hear from you. Next, the Brunswick News has actually written two editorials devoted to my efforts. One almost a year ago, August of seventeen, again, I was quoted, "Its important thing is that we understand what the property owners and renters' thoughts are." Last year, almost exactly a year ago, the editorial was entitled, "Regulating Vacation Rentals Is A Good Idea." I've been on the radio multiple times on fourteen forty AM with Scott Ryffen, and most recently with Lauren Nobles, and I'm certain that I've discussed this issue several times there. Some of you might know that I've had quarterly town halls on St. Simons Island since I've been elected, and a year ago, I started talking about this issue at the town halls, and I've done so in every town hall since. We've also had multiple open work sessions with teleconferencing with Host Compliance, the most recent one being in March of this year, the preceding one was in July of two thousand eighteen. I've also talked to Ms. Odell of the group proposing self-regulation, the so-called Short-Term Rental Owners Association of Georgia. I've also met with Mr. Hours recently with two representatives of Expedia, which is the national and international organization that currently controls VRBO and HomeAway. We had a very pleasant hour-and-a-half meeting, and we left agreeing that as we move forward with ordinances, they would help review what we have. Does that sound to anybody like a lack of transparency? Other communities like New Orleans are trying to ban these outright, Savannah, Georgia, St. Augustine, Florida, they put a cap on the number of homes that can do short-term rentals in certain areas, and once that cap's been met, you're on a waiting list to have somebody drop off before you can get on? We're not doing these things. We need to know who's doing this, we need to have them get a license number and a business license, we need to know that they're in compliance with what will be, hopefully, ordinances written for safety and quality of life, and finally, we need to know that all are paying their taxes fairly to keep that playing field level. Now, a few words on Host Compliance. Where'd they come from for us? I first heard of them when they were being mentioned in a news article regarding work that they were doing in Denver, Colorado. I discussed this with Attorney Mumford, and he contacted them. Since then, Attorney Mumford and I have had multiple conversations with a principal at Host Compliance, a man who actually lives in Vancouver, not San Francisco and not California. But in any case, we've also had, as I've mentioned, at least three teleconference meetings with this principal at Host Compliance. In contradistinction to what Ms. Odell has characterized in the newspaper and shared and disseminated by many others, they're not simply a, quote, "California company," or a, quote, "West Coast Big City Solution," end quote, working on San Francisco-like environments. They're the biggest in the business. They recently merged with Number Two, and currently are involved with two-hundred-and-fifty other cities and counties in the U.S. and Canada. As I said, our point of contact is in Vancouver. They've had extensive experience in ordinance writing and in many situations that are nearly identical to ours. There's been great misunderstanding where we are with them and where we are going with them. Attorney Mumford recently sent an email to all members of the Board of Commission about our agreement. So let me paraphrase. If we accept the proposal this evening, we'll be in the first phase, which will be the ordinance drafting process. As with all of the other ordinances that the county needs to adopt, there's a process. Attorney Mumford estimates this process is gonna be three to six months in duration. There'll be multiple meetings about the specifics, and we have no obligation to adopt anything that Host Compliance necessarily recommends. If the Board of Commissioners, however, decides not to move forward at that point, no obligation to Host Compliance been made other than five-thousand-dollar fee for the ordinance consulting services. If, however, we adopt those ordinances and move to Phase Two, we'll move into the subscription service phase, which lasts for revolving periods of a year, including the licensing and the identification of the numbers of actual units in our county. And the bulk of the costs are due and payable at that time with a six-month trial period. If we don't like what we're getting, if the trial period doesn't work out, we can withdraw and get our money back. I'd like to emphasize also, we are not outsourcing our ordinance enforcement. That's up to code enforcement and our police department. But not every complaint bubbles up to the level of the police department. So code enforcement doesn't work on nights and weekends, therefore, the hotline is there. If people have troubles on the weekends because plastic bags of overflowing garbage are stuck on the driveway next to them, and they feel helpless, we all know Republic won't pick up those bags, they've got a hotline to call. The hotline contacts code enforcement, and we know who's responsible. We are going, hopefully, if we agree this evening, to the company with the most experience nationwide to assist us in drafting the most comprehensive and fair ordinances as possible. And Attorney Mumford has told me that this has been going on for ten to twelve years in the county with, unfortunately, deferral, 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 the old kicking the can down the road. And hopefully, this will not become a situation, as described again by Ms. Odell in the paper, which she describes today as a mutiny-type situation, the most antagonistic means of addressing the situation, which might lead to a bloody, protracted fight. Seriously, on the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, we're talking about a bloody fight in Glen County about the ordinances that we don't have to control a new type of business in Glen County? We need to get a little more serious. And the most frightening thing about the program of self-regulation, and Chief, I don't know if you saw this, but it was said, they have a peer oversight program where, and I'm talking again about the proposed intervention by the Short-Term Rental Owners Association of Georgia. It's quoted in the paper as saying, "We handle complaints, so the government doesn't have to be involved, and we aren't afraid to kick bad tenants out when they cross the line and start disturbing neighbors." That sounds to me like a recipe for disaster, to have non-professional people trying to kick tenants out. With all the crazy people in the world these days, I can just imagine what that's gonna lead to in Glen County. So with that, I hope I've set the stage and the background, and I've convinced some of you, this isn't a rush to judgment, but this has been a process, an open process, a process that we're trying to gradually move that we're trying to gradually move forward with accomplishing what hasn't been accomplished for 10 to 12 years. And I hope I can get the support of my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy, I think that was a good presentation, very thorough. Like to open up the discussion with the commissioners. They may want to ask you some questions about it. Commissioners?
Yeah, first of all, let me say that as newly elected and being in a campaign mode last year, that I agree with Commissioner Murphy that there is a lot of consternation within the neighborhoods of St. Simon's regarding accountability in regards to short-term rental. It was a topic that I heard quite often. My question specifically for this host compliance, and I do have, I come from a long line of entrepreneurs. I do understand that our economy is changing with technology, and with this change, things happen a lot differently than they did 10 or 15, even 20 years ago. But if we do go down this road and we go through the consulting phase, can we, because it sounded like you, Commissioner Murphy, said, and I'd like to have Attorney Mumford clarify, but if we go through the consulting phase and we do draft some ordinances, are we then, if we draft the ordinance, then bound to use host compliance? Or can we say at that moment, okay, you've helped us to this point, but we're going to take it from here, and we're going to take it from here? Is there any way we're being bound that way?
No, sir.
None at all, huh? We can get out at any time, is that correct?
If you determine not to go to Phase Two.
But we can go, we could at some point, if we go through this process and we develop some ordinances with their help, we can then say, see you later, we're going to handle it ourselves if we so choose. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Why then, in the second part of this agreement, are we then agreeing to a contract amount? I don't understand why we just don't agree to the first part of this phase, first phase of this contract. Why are we having to make an agreement for all, both phases?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
One of the most difficult aspects is to be able to identify who is, in fact, renting out these properties. Now, there's a lot of property managers, and that won't be difficult. But people move from Airbnb to HomeAway to VRBO and multiple other websites, and we don't have the technical manpower to assure 100% compliance with the licensing fee and with the safety requirements in the ordinance unless we have a database of who's involved in participating in this new business.
Yeah, I don't think that's what I'm asking, though. I'm asking why in this agreement, we're going ahead and agreeing to what the amount of the contract will be, the $92,000. Why is that being brought up now as opposed to just not a one contract that talks about consulting only? Why is there a second part there?
Commissioner, the subscription services are, that's their bread and butter. That's where they, that's the service they provide. The consulting service is a, you know, it's an accessory service that they do provide, but it's not something that they really push. They say they'll help with it, but that's an independent consultant that they'll hire and help us with that process. But really, the subscription services, the address identification, the hotline, the letters, that's what they offer. That's what this company does. So if we wanted to come up with our own ordinance and then contact them, we can do that. We don't have to use them for the consulting services. That was just something that, because they've seen and they've worked with different communities nationwide, you know, it's the best practices. You know, what has worked in areas, what hasn't worked, what have you seen? And certainly, those are things that, you know, staff and can do as well, but it's that back and forth that helps kind of with the best practices as opposed to having to reinvent the wheel and just pull off blindly different ordinances offline without having that dialogue. But the county is certainly very capable of drafting an ordinance and then engaging them after that ordinance is either ready to be adopted or adopted. And what we've done as staff, we have broken down this agreement into two phases. This was our proposal as opposed to engage a product that on day one tomorrow, if you will, where the $92,000 will be due and payable, we proposed a bifurcated process where that obligation wouldn't be triggered until the commission was comfortable going into Phase Two, if at all. So we proposed that as opposed to them. But ordinarily, their stock agreement would have us be, you know, on the hook or be responsible, you know, the day after with a six-month trial period. But we thought it was important that we didn't start the trial period until the board actually felt comfortable moving forward with an ordinance, this process. So to answer your question, Commissioner Quinn, we could do that and just bifurcate the agreements or just go on our own and draft it and then engage them when we're ready for the services.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with what's being proposed, per se. Just the wording says, you know, approve the purchase of their services and annual subscription price for the first year, $91,795 plus $5,000. The wording's been confusing to everybody, and so I want to make sure that we're clear what we're actually agreeing to at this point. That's the basis for my question.
The motion is confusing, I think. The recommended motion acts like we're getting in business with them beyond the $5,000 ordinance consulting.
Is that on the write-up from IT staff?
Yeah, it's in the report, Aaron. It's not terribly clear.
Certainly, certainly.
And so, you know, maybe when I propose the agreement, we'll stipulate, you know, Phase One, $5,000, and put that to bed.
My understanding, that is what we were considering tonight, was the $5,000 period.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, everybody threw down there? Okay. Excuse me. I got three points I'd like to make to you, to you guys. Number one, I don't know why we're sitting here discussing this contract tonight. That was not the plan. Last time we had a discussion about this, we asked our attorney to put a contract together for our observation and break it down, see what we liked, what we didn't like, certainly give the public an opportunity to get involved, to read it, put in their pros and cons, their input. I was very surprised to see this on the agenda because that is not what we're talking about. Number two, the meeting that Mr. Anderson mentioned, I understand, David, you and Murphy were supposed to meet with the representatives of some of the...
Yeah, I was invited to a meeting of property managers, I think it's next Friday, and I said I'd be more than happy to attend. I was invited.
Well, that's been mentioned, you know, more than once to me. And to me, what we're doing here now is we're throwing the information that Mr. Murphy's put together and Mr. Mumford's put together, and we're throwing that out there. And yeah, we may have got some dirty little notes, but that's what you get when, in my opinion, you don't open up the room and let everybody talk back and forth or have some sort of organization. Transparency is a major word that we use. I don't think there's, I don't think there's been a good communication, I would use that term, between us and them, them being the people we serve. We're doing this because they put us up here to do it. We're not doing this to tell them what we're going to do. We're doing this because they want us to, because they pay the taxes and they put us in these chairs. It's not for us to sit here and tell them what we're going to do and what they're not going to do. The third point I'd like to make, numbers. If we're so in dire need of making sure everybody pays what they're supposed to pay, the ordinances on noise and all that kind of stuff, and keep in mind, I went to the Burton House. I saw it in operation. I was there. I met with the Burtons face-to-face, and me and another commissioner and our attorney. So I was there 10 years ago. I know what y'all are talking about. I know what can come out of something like this. But I also want to know is why we're submitting all this stuff but no numbers? We don't know. We may be making tons of money or we may be losing tons of money, but we don't know. We don't know yet. So my point is, if we're not rushing it, then let's have our meeting with our realtor companies in the next few days, hear what the folks have got to say. And before we go rushing into anything here, I mean, once again, what's the big rush? I mean, we can, you can put this table list for now, put it on the next meeting if you want to vote for it. If you're so determined to spend $5,000 to find out, I mean, basically, what I'm hearing is we're spending $5,000 to find out the numbers, to see if this is something that we really need. It just seems like to me that the feedback that we're getting right now from the general public and the people that are in this business are the folks we need to be listening to. We don't need to be, in my opinion, sitting up here trying to govern. I don't know how many of you know anything about short-term rentals. I'll be the first one to tell you, I had no idea. I'd like to be educated by the people that make a living doing it, and I think all of y'all should take that in consideration before you go passing anything, voting on anything tonight. Thank you.
Well, obviously, I disagree and spent 15 minutes discussing the transparency and the process and the opportunity for people to give input, to plead, to get input. There's been no rush. I have had experience. We had a VRBO in our family, and I did it for two or three years. I understand what they're doing. But, you know, this has been going on for 10 or 12 years. I've been intensely involved in it for two and a half years. The most important aspect of what we're talking about is to look at what might be written in our, hopefully, to-be-written ordinances and have a discussion there. Otherwise, it's just a discussion, well, I want it, I don't want it. You want this, I want that. But it's time to move on to the ordinances, and that's where the rubber meets the road, and that's where the real substantive discussion will come. And the only way we're going to do that, in my opinion, and do it expeditiously, is to go to one of the best in the class and use their template that has been duplicated successfully in other communities like ours and get on with it.
I think when these people are engaged, Commissioner Murphy, I think the plan is that the real estate community, the realtors, the public is going to be involved at that point in helping to frame and orchestrate these ordinances. Right now, we don't have anything to talk about.
That's exactly the point.
And so, I've spoken with, I've spoken with a lot of realtors, and when I shared that basically what we're doing is it's a $5,000 investment to try to do what we've not been able to do for ourselves for the last 12 years, and it hasn't been because I don't think we've tried. We just need some help. And frankly, at the end of the day, if we can create a level playing field for those folks out there that are doing it the way you ought to do it, which is 80%, Commissioner, I'll take that number, then I think we've done something. And whether we go forward with their software or whatever, I have no idea. But I think it's foolhardy if we just stick our head in the sand and hope everybody's going to come together with it and be able to write some ordinances that our attorneys, that, you know, we just haven't been able to write. But to say that the community, the real estate community particularly, is not going to be engaged in the process with these people if we vote to hire them is ludicrous. You're going to be the ones directing the ship or on it with us. So I just feel like we need to go ahead and do this and move on down the road and decide what we're going to do going forward after we can determine if we can write ordinances that are enforceable and so.
Commissioners, any more discussion before we call them?
I would like to add, I've been getting calls just like the rest of you all and looking at the emails and had a chance to talk to, had a chance to speak to one of the speakers that we had tonight at length about this. And I'm grateful for Commissioner Murphy to give us the scenario which we came to this point over the last couple of years, because some of that I had forgotten about. But what I had not forgotten about was the complaints I got around the issues with the Burton House and other situations around the renting out of these homes. Of course, we don't have much of that in my district, but I've gotten quite a few calls from people complaining about these party houses. And I imagine if I had one next door to me, not knowing when an event was going to happen and when one happened, not knowing, you know, what they were going to be doing, if they were going to be overcrowded and the parking, I just couldn't imagine living like that. So if we can do something to lessen that and to deal with that, then I'm going to support that. And either all the things that Commissioner Murphy outlined about the opportunity for input is a myth or it's true. Now, I was here for, I believe, all of that. So I know what he's saying, the opportunity for input was there. We didn't just start this process, and I know he didn't just start this process. So, and maybe some folk just got tuned in since we're at this point in time. You're still going to have an opportunity to have input on this. This is not the final end of it. So just take that under consideration.
I'd like to also take an opportunity to thank Commissioner Murphy for the amount of research that he's done on this, for his passion. His passion is contagious and a little bit intimidating. But I have concerns about the public safety issues, those kind of things that we certainly need to take in consideration. Wholeheartedly believe that we should have a level playing field with all the rental properties on the island, and I think we need to have ordinances in place that will take care of that. I'm not a big fan of the host compliance path, but saying that, I will say that if we're only committing to the study tonight of $5,000, I could go along with that. I would also say that we would very much want the realtor community, the parties involved in vacation rentals, to have a voice at the table. And I will say also that many times, maybe opportunity is given, that maybe until the 11th hour, it doesn't seem critical. But oftentimes, we know from the past that the public is left out of the initial phases. So I'm very much in favor of you having a seat at the table and help us decide this. I think it is critical. I think it's also time to make this work. And hopefully, we can have that meeting next week. Hopefully, tonight, our recommendation is going to be for the $5,000 portion of this motion. Thank you.
It looks like I get to speak after all. I'm one of the longer-serving commissioners on this board. Commissioner Coleman...
Commissioner Coleman is the longest and been around a little bit longer than I have. But before Commissioner Murphy showed up and got the ball rolling here, I'd already been receiving calls. And I am a neighborhood backer. I am a quality-of-life proponent in neighborhoods. I view neighborhoods as almost a kind of a reverend place you can go to after you've left, you know, got up in the morning, or if it's any evening when you head out and head out all night doing your work or what have you. When you come home, you want to be away from the world. You want your peace and quiet. If you want to get outside, you want to be able to talk to your wife or your daughter, find out what they did in school that morning. You know, so long as the music and the party isn't going and you can't hear what in the heck you're doing at your house. And I tell you, before I ever thought about being a commissioner, I have, I butted heads with neighbors that got too noisy in my neighborhood. And maybe I shouldn't have done it, but I did. I think a neighborhood's a neighborhood. And we have short-term rentals in neighborhoods and they're not going to go away. We're not here to make them go away. And for all those short-term rental operators and owners and managers that are doing the right thing, we applaud you for that. We know that you understand what I'm talking about up here. You've got to be good neighbors. You've got to be respectful. You've got to be thoughtful. But I'm telling you, we have some people that don't care. And that's why we're up here tonight dealing with this. Somebody has to care at some point in time or either there's going to be some trouble out there. And, you know, how we police it, it's a tough question for us. You know, we look at what's out there. One of the gentlemen in the audience here tonight, I talked to him on the phone earlier and I said, "Everything we do is a balancing act." We're not doing this for us. We're doing this for the community because we've been hearing from the community, you know, we've got a problem. We need to do something about it. We don't want to go overboard. I hope we don't go overboard. But something needs to be done. I believe that. I am convinced of that. And as I say again, I was getting phone calls. People are so frustrated and the people that called me from St. Simons, they know that I live almost in Brantley County as a county. But I mean, I don't even live nowhere close to St. Simons. But they want the neighbors to some of these party houses, short-term rental houses, they were just so frustrated. They called the commissioner at that time. He could only do so much. And they were reaching out to everybody they could reach out. And I got a lot of calls about it. And I don't know if it's the same unit, same area all the time, but I got a lot of calls. And I come to understand we have a problem. I'm here today to work with these commissioners and trying to find the best balanced fix to that problem. It's going to be transparent, no doubt about it. It has been for the last year and a half, two years, and it will continue to be. I encourage everyone to, you know, if you think we're missing the mark somewhere with how we going with this and you're not hearing what you need to hear, stay in contact with us. But where we go with the, with this first, what I'm going to call the first step now at this point, ordinance, writing ordinances, it's going to be very transparent. And commissioners here, you know, they'll have an opportunity to vote on something if we ever put anything in place. This is not going to be done by staff and we're going to wake up one day and find out we have ordinances on the book that's going to be enforced. Whatever ends up on the book is going to be enforced. Seven commissioners up here will get to vote on that. And it will be after a very transparent process. And I do imagine it's going to take a little while. It's not going to be done in a week or two or a month. It's going to take some time to get it done. So, with all due respect for all the responsible short-term rental operators and owners and managers and all, you know, bear with us while we try to find that right solution to what we see as a problem. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Yeah. So, any further comment? I just want to remind again that before ordinances are adopted, there is public input. I mean, that's critical. That's just the way the process works. And the other issue I forgot to mention is I did talk to one realtor slash broker who said the licensing fee that was mentioned was being discussed amongst the realty community. A thousand dollars was mentioned. That's not even close, you know? It's going to be, you know, something, you know, that to sustain the program, 50, 75, maybe $100, but it's not going to be a thousand dollars license fee to get this done. I don't think it's going to be particularly onerous.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve the service agreement with Host Compliance LLC for the amount of $5,000 for the purchase of their service and a consulting fee to assist the county with short-term rental ordinances. And that funding will be provided by the FY19-FY20 IT operating budget.
Second.
Commissioners have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is 6-4. Those opposed likewise? One opposed. Thank you, commissioners. It passes. Under General Business, item 29, consider approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer item number 29.
You've done a great job. Thank you. Thank you.
It's wonderful having you.
All right. Have a motion to defer item 29.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Did you want to defer that? Take your time?
I'm sorry, yes, I do. But I've got to look at my phone to see what my instructions are. I think it was the July 20th meeting, I'm sorry, I mean, June 20th meeting, June 20th meeting.
All you all that voted for that, is that okay? All right. Very well. Okay. Item 30, consider awarding the bid for the historic courthouse chiller replacement to Bowen Mechanical Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $64,175 with funding to be provided by the FY19 Capital Projects Fund budget. That's Tamara.
Good evening. We took this item to the Finance Committee to, and bid, we bid it out to replace the historic courthouse chiller. And we received five bids. The lowest bid that we received was from Bowen Mechanical in the amount of $64,175. Certified Electric is a local Brunswick company and they applied to receive local preference. So, when we took this item to Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, we made an error in the calculation of the local preference process. So, in the interest of transparency, we asked that this item be pulled off the consent agenda so that we could admit that there was an error made in that calculation. And we are now recommending that this item be awarded to the low bidder of Bowen Mechanical out of Savannah in the amount of $64,175 with funding provided by the FY19 Capital Projects Fund budget.
Could you explain what happened?
So, our ordinance has several different caveats. And so, we, the purchasing agent is new. She read it. She asked me to read it. I read it. We both read the ordinance the same way. So, it says $10,000 or 2%, whichever is less. So, we felt like if the low bid was up to $10,000, that we could go with this. So, the difference between the two bids, I think, was around $6,000. So, we felt like, we thought that it was under $10,000, but it wasn't over 2%. We were okay. Unfortunately, that's not the way that the ordinance is written and the attorneys were able to catch us a little bit too late on that. And it should have been the lesser of 10,000 or 2%. So, 2% of this would have been less than around $4,000. And the second bidder was 6,000 higher. Also, when we offered the local preference, the local vendor agreed to match the low bid. So, that would have, that would have worked had the, had we calculated the local preference correctly. And there had, apparently, this issue has happened a few times and there's some wording in the ordinance that might need to be looked at and so.
It really wasn't a calculation error. It was interpretation of that ordinance. And you could read it, you could go either way with the thing. I agree. I think we need to take a look at that and make it a little bit clearer. Because it's, I mean, you have to go back and tell somebody, you know, you ruined their Christmas. So, in particular with a local vendor.
We want to encourage local vendors to be involved and to bid and to continue to feed into the community. So, I'm hopeful that we can look at this ordinance and maybe give a little bit more leeway.
Well, if our local vendor offered to match, how did that then disqualify?
Because we weren't, under the current ordinance, we were not allowed to allow them to offer to match because they didn't meet the qualifications of the lesser of 2% or 10,000.
Is it 2% 10,000? Is that fairly standard throughout the most counties or is it more arbitrary?
We went through this process of trying to work with those numbers years ago. So, there's not any one uniform set of numbers. But that's what this board came up with, but there was some debate at that time. So, I think it's generally in line, more or less, but it could be anything really within reason that you saw fit.
Yeah. I appreciate the sentiment of wanting to see local companies bid and I think that that should be recognized when we're looking at those bids. So, yeah, I think we need to look at those, the wording to make sure that it's clear and that everybody understands it.
As a side note, we are going to be participating in a conference in Brunswick. And I don't have the exact date, but it's being put on by UGA. And it's to encourage local vendors to get involved in the governmental bidding process. Our purchasing manager is going to go out and speak to business owners and get involved in that process. So, we do want local vendors to bid, to bid on our projects.
Sorry. Okay, Tamara. Commissioners, any more questions or discussion? Okay. Can we get a motion?
Offer a motion that we award the bid as presented by the staff to the lowest responsible bidder.
Have motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Tamara. Item 31, consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between Glen County and the city of Brunswick for the establishment and operations of the Brunswick-Glen Special Investigations Unit without a recommendation for Finance Committee. Chief?
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I bring before you tonight a recommended agreement between the city of Brunswick Police Department and the county police department. This agreement would be for special investigative purposes and would cover the investigation of prostitution, human trafficking, illegal gambling, criminal street gangs, alcohol beverage violations, and narcotics. Basically, the quality-of-life crimes that many of you have talked about tonight. Plus also, these are serious crimes that affect our community. We feel it's in the best interest of our community to combine our efforts in order to address these issues. These are plagues that are not just affecting Glen County, but it's also on a national level. And by pooling the resources, we think we can have a direct effect on that in this area and we can hold accountable the people who are bringing this crime and this poison to our streets. I would ask for your consideration to allow this combined effort to get functional in our community so we can start addressing these crimes as stated and we can start arresting the bad guys and holding accountable the people who are responsible for damaging our population. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yes, Chief. Got a couple of questions. And I brought this up when it came before the Finance Committee. What's the difference between this new group that's being, the new investigative units that's being proposed as opposed to what GBNet was? What are the differences? And can you talk to that a little bit?
Yes, sir. And thank you, thank you for bringing that up because I know that's a question that the public wants an answer to. Back in February, I brought to light some issues we were having with the GBNet unit, the narcotics unit. That was a combined effort between the city and the county. We brought these effort, I brought that effort, I brought that information forward out of the concern that it jeopardized investigations that we were working. We're all aware of the communications that has been back and forth. We're all aware of the publicity that's taken place. Because of that, we have revamped the policies and procedures for investigative activity. This review has taken place between the city police department and the county police department, as well as we have restructured by adding additional supervision over the division to ensure that we meet the demands of scrutiny and also that we meet the demands of accountability. The old GBNet unit was basically a unit that was comprised of assets from both departments. They focused in on narcotics activity. And it was comprised, and I stand to be corrected, but I think back in 2001. They were very effective. You know, they made a number of arrests. They were very active up until February 1 of this year. However, what was uncovered cannot be tolerated because it jeopardizes the very foundation of what the United States is built on, the Constitution. We have to make sure that everybody's rights are guaranteed and that they're protected. And that was my responsibility and that's why I brought the information forward for it to be looked into. This new unit will not just focus in on narcotics because narcotics is not just a problem that we deal with in our community. Like I stated earlier in my opening statements, we have to deal with prostitution, we have to deal with gambling, we have to deal with gang, street gang activity, child exploitation, you know, a number of other crimes that spin off of narcotics or that will lead to the use of narcotics or the transportation of narcotics. So, we take it very seriously. This unit will focus in on that. Also, we're going to encompass the task force agents that we have assigned to our department, which are FBI agents. There are also ATF agents. We will have a DEA agent spot on the task force. With the help of the federal agencies and our presence, not only can we hold the bad guys accountable in our community and to the judicial system here, but also we can potentially take any violations to the federal level where the penalties are much steeper. There's been a lot of thought given into the, into this unit. Once again, the policies and procedures have been thoroughly revamped. They have been looked at. Both Chief Jones and myself have reviewed them. We concur. I'm not going to tell you that those policies will stay constant like they are because they're going to change because mandates change on us. Court decisions change those policies. So, there will be a constant reveal on that. Additionally, the accountability that's going to be held in the, in the unit itself, like I stated earlier, there's an additional supervisor that's there. That supervisor is there to ensure that the paperwork, documentation, the accountability is in place and the review process is there to ensure that we're doing the right thing.
Yes, sir. One of the question, or a couple of other questions. You know, we, you and I have talked about this, the fact that you have several different agencies involved in this and that's great. I'm a little concerned and I expressed this at our last meeting, making sure that we have, use all assets that are available to us. And, you know, the sheriff's department is a department that has been given a lot of, under the Georgia Constitution, a lot of different powers. And so, as, as crime changes from 2001 to today, where, where crime is, you know, everybody's got cell phones and you can look on ways to see where police officers are, I mean, really the whole investigative function is really not just Glen County anymore. You're over several areas. Do you feel handicapped or do you feel totally prepared to be able to handle issues that are in surrounding counties that may bleed over into those areas?
I do. I think the merging of the task force officers to the unit, once again, the federal agencies that I mentioned earlier, they're limited. I think the merging of the task force officers to the unit, once again, the federal agencies that I mentioned earlier, their limitation is based on federal law. Their capabilities are not restricted by county boundaries or by state boundaries. They have the ability to reach outside the jurisdiction. Additionally, as you and I have discussed, and also with other members of the board, we have a policy that is in place. If we have to look at investigations outside our jurisdiction, this policy ensures, it triggers the fact that both Chief Jones and myself will be notified before any activity takes place outside the jurisdiction. We will reach out with the representative from the other agency outside the jurisdiction to offer our assistance or to turn the investigation over to that agency so it can continue on.
Thank you.
Chief, I wanted to address, really, I think where the crux of the matter is with the reorganization of this effort.
Yes.
And that was, because we had some bad cops.
Absolutely.
And I want to commend you for, for jumping on this and dealing with it. And I know it's a difficult situation with, with the camaraderie that law enforcement folk have, to have someone in the family to do the things that were done. But you brought it to the light, and you began to deal with it. And as someone whose district has, over the years, not had the best relationship with law enforcement, the DA's office, and others, that I, I'm happy to see that you're trying to change those things. And also, as the father of a son that travels from a neighboring county, who knows that he could be killed just by the color of his skin, I have a big concern about the quality of law enforcement officers that we hire and maintain. And I know that it's impossible to know, to identify them sometimes, but I believe that you are, have put us on a course to do some better things. So I really, I support this effort, and I think you've expanded it. And I know that you're open to being flexible and making it better as we move forward, as you identify issues. But I just wanted to encourage you to move forward with it.
Thank you for your kind comments.
You know, my, my reading on this, Chief, of what happened in the not-too-distant past, it really strikes me as almost cultural, where there's a culture that, you know, an officer doesn't want to rat out another officer, sees a problem, wants to try to solve it internally. How do you address sort of changing that culture such that, you know, as I read the story, observations were made but weren't reported up the chain of command? How do you encourage the people in your unit to make sure if they see something that they all know in their gut isn't right, as was described extensively in the paper in this case, to go to the supervisor and make sure that supervisor is the kind of person that will bring it up to you? Because this, I mean, you think about the number of cases that were fouled by what these individuals did, it's just mind-boggling.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, and I think that's a great question, and I think the public is entitled to have an answer to that. And I will tell you that it goes back to the moral compass, ethical training, and the fact that officers have to know that they're held accountable to the same level as everybody else. And the, the fact, you know, that it was embedded in the, in the department, which is the only way I can describe it. Once again, if you see something, you need to say something. You know, we hear that all the time. And it, you know, just because you work with somebody, and you know them, and you're in the same profession with them, if they're doing something wrong, it doesn't make it right. You know, you have to report it. And I will set the example by, if I see something that's not right, I will certainly take the appropriate action on it, and we will move ahead. But I will also tell the commission, the commissioners that when that action is taken, it's not based on rumor or speculation, it's based on fact after an investigation has been conducted, and those facts support the action that's being taken.
Well, we need this, you know, I'm fully supportive of the effort, and, you know, God bless you and your men and women, and we need it in the worst way. So I see no reason to hold back on approval moving forward and getting this thing going. And we all hope and pray that it works out much better this next time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I'd like to say that, you know, with all the bad, bad publicity that, you know, has come out of the Casada case, if you will.
Yes.
You know, it, it really allowed us an opportunity to make what's probably a pretty darn good operation, it's just got some bruises in it. And I say bruises, serious bruises.
Yes.
You know, to, to make that operation better, you know, from one end to the other. One of the things this Board of Commissioners has to do is make this, make this community as safe as we possibly can. We have to put the money where we think the money needs to go, and, you know, make, make this community just as safe as we can. We have a lot of bad things going on out here in our community, as all communities this size does. And, you know, when we, when we find that we have a problem, we should grab a hold of that problem, you know, try to figure out what it is, see what we can do to fix it, and get it fixed, and make things better, and move on. I want to thank Commissioner Brunson. He's kind of worked hand-in-hand with me when all this news came to light, and we were determined to try to get down to the bottom of it. You know, we've talked with you, we've talked with county manager, we've talked with others in the community that had a role in trying to get to the bottom of what happened, so we can find a fix, you know, see what was broken. And, you know, we were determined, and, you know, to get this thing right, and, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's, it, it's something you don't want to have to deal with when it's in your own community.
Yes.
Okay? I mean, to know that you've got problems like this, and, but, they're not going to go away if you don't address them face-on, and that, and I think that's what we've done. I'm not trying to pat ourselves on the back, but we, we know what we have to do here, and we try to be responsible. And you've been very open-minded about listening to what we've learned, what you've learned yourself directly, being involved in it, and looking, looking for those things that we need to do, and doing everything we can do. And, and for that, I, you know, I appreciate it, because, you know, we're all in this thing together. And this community can only know that they're safe if we're doing things right, if, if, if our people are above reproach, that we can trust in them. Because it's at the point of trust, when, when the citizens lose trust in what we're doing, you know, it's pretty much over for us, and, you know, we're not going to have them on board with us, and we're just not going to be able to get anything done like we need to do. But, you know, I, I think today is a good day, you know, if we can take a vote here and get this thing approved, and get this city and county working again, they have not been working again, and that's, that's bad for this community. We need these folks out on the streets working to protect us.
Yes.
So, thank you very much, and thank you, fellow commissioners.
You ready for a motion?
Yep.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Glen County and the city of Brunswick for the establishment and operation of the Brunswick-Glen Special Investigation Unit.
Second. Have motion, second? Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signal five by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Attorney, we got anything for executive session?
Go, Splosh thing down there, the last item.
Pardon?
Last item. I can, I can whip out a motion real quick on this, if you want to, just not talk all night about.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Item 32. You know, I think my stomach was, had me distracted.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've talked about this for about a million times.
Somebody wanted to order pizza for tonight, didn't they?
Well, that was me, yeah, but I was going to have it brought in at 10:30.
Item 32, consider formally initiating the planning process for the special purpose local option sales tax, known as Splosh 2020, with a target Splosh election date of May 19, 2020.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah. Can I ask you a quick, quick question? I know we've had a long meeting.
Sure.
But, but this is starting to generate a lot of buzz in the community, and I was listening to the Rife and Radio Show today, and a comment was made, Attorney Mumford, about whether we could structure the Splosh as a line-item veto type of situation. Could you say yes or no, and I shake your head?
My apologies, Commissioner, so.
This could take all night.
My apologies. So if I understand the question correctly, is can you list the projects and let the voters decide which ones they want and don't want?
That's my understanding of what was being discussed this morning, is that rather than have, you know, a bunch of big projects all packaged together and voted up or down, you know, sort of pick and choose, which doesn't sound like a, you know, recipe for great success, because those areas with, with less voter involvement or less advocates may get left out of the formula. But I think that was, was the suggestion that, you know, once all the commissioners put it all together, let the voters sort of take out what they don't want and keep the good stuff in as they see it. Not doable, is it?
Kind of like a la carte.
Right, right, exactly. A la carte Splosh, that's a good way to put it. Is that doable?
It is not.
Thank you.
I move that the Glen County Board of Commissioners formally initiate a planning process for Splosh 2020 with a target Splosh election date of May the 19, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? If being none, I call the question. All those in favor, signal five by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Attorney, anything? There is nothing. This meeting is adjourned.
We already will.